Okay, board members, we're going to reconvene our meeting from March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And at this point, I'm going to open the floor for public comment on the levy rates that have been put out for public comment. If there's anyone in the room to speak to that specifically. There is no one here, superintendent?
Superintendent recommends that the board adopt the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five levy rates as presented in your executive content.
I need a motion?
Second.
Okay, I got Dan and then Jen as a second. Any questions or comments, board members? Hearing none, all in favor of the adopt, of the adoption of the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five levy rate, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Okay, our next board meeting will be in about three seconds. We're adjourned, and at this point, I'm going to call to order the April six, I can't remember what date it was, actually, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, Board of Education meeting, all rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent, public hearing.
This is our calendar hearing, do you want to open the floor for public comment on the calendar?
Sure, we want to do that, is there anyone in the room that wants to comment on the calendar? Okay, hearing no comments. Superintendent, do you have information on this for the, for the board?
Um, I know we covered it at our last board meeting, and certainly I know Sandy and our deputy superintendent, Talariqo, could answer any further questions for the board. We did, we did, I know you had asked us to do a little polling, so I know our deputy superintendent polled the principals and asked the principals to go back and poll some teachers as well, so you want to cover the results there on that maybe?
Well, again, I think it speaks for itself here, we're continuing to take a few other input from, from our teachers, but I'm going to say from, in the ones that I've spoken with Sandy, is reaching out to a number of folks that, you know, helped look at the calendar with her. What it provides here, and certainly most of you know, not all of you, how stringent the rules are in, from the state. So we don't have a lot of latitude, but Sandy's kind of a little bit of a genius with trying to make magic on these, what she does have to work with, and what we want to provide is a calendar for the community and for students for their best education. But we're also very sensitive to our teaching staff. It is very difficult, and there was a piece of legislation this year that would have condensed and not allowed us to have any days off. We would have to go straight through from the first day of school till the last day. Well, I don't believe that that, thank goodness it didn't get any traction, I don't believe that it would have been healthy for our students or our staff. The, the idea is that everybody needs to refresh and renew a little bit, and our students do, and certainly our staff does. So we are very considerate of our staff when we look at this, and this calendar will reflect time, a few days, almost in every month, that will let staff have an opportunity to have an additional day. Those are through the out of calendar days and also through what the state calls the outside school environment days, which are paid holidays that the state did put in, in place of a raise, back in the late eighties. But they are there and they are valuable because it allows our staff to have some time, to have a break. Next year, and I know Nancy, you had even mentioned this, this year the, the Easter was early, the Easter holiday time or break. So we ended up having two breaks in March. Next year, that will not be the case because, again, if you've looked ahead, Easter is mid-April. And so we are taking a break two days in March, that does coincide with the WVU calendar for families that are affected by that, and then a little bit of a wraparound a few days, much like what we had this year. And then again, because of the way the, the Christmas holiday falls, you have to account for extra days there because it's sort of like middle of the week. And so we, we have to, you know, maneuver here, there, and everywhere to get this to come out. Sandy spends a lot of time counting, 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 to make sure all the days come out. But everyone I've spoken to is in favor of having some break time and not having, if you taught, and some of you have or worked in a school, January through March can be a long time. And so I, I always felt it in the schools, and so I know the staff did, I know our students did. So this will give some break time for everyone. Again, Sandy's really conscientious about looking at that, and we'll have that for you here shortly. But we obviously want to take the input from as many people as possible to see if there was something out there that we hadn't figured out.
I think at that last meeting, we had mentioned that snow days would have to be made up.
Yes.
There were more Arctic days?
Oh, yes, but we didn't have any this year, we had, now, we don't have to make up any, unless, let's make sure we don't have some weather event. Because we have what we call bank time, or it was referred to as bank time originally.
Right, and we were always over.
Yes, and that's how we have been able to account for the five days that we did miss this year. Now, if we missed another day, a whole day, you're right.
Even with virtual or Arctic Academy?
Well, no, now, if we, if we had Arctic Academy days, you're right, that's still in play.
But we didn't have those five, we didn't use them.
No, we did not use them. So again, you know, we were always considered of what kind of weather it was and, you know, what, what would be safe for everyone, but we have not used them. Now, we don't know for sure because, again, Sandy usually gets that application. I don't know if the state, oh, it came through, good, good.
Yeah, so, and Dan, non-instruct, non-traditional instructional days do not, they're not in this calendar. There's a separate application that counties do to provide that time.
But we will do it for next year.
I got it right here.
All right, thank you. Very good, board members, any other questions or comments? All right, superintendent, let's just go ahead and move on then. Reports, discussions, follow-up?
Yeah, or delegations.
We have no delegations.
Okay.
Am I missing delegations?
We don't have any delegations.
Oh, sorry, I skipped it mentally, so we have none, sorry.
So we are down to reports, discussion, and follow-up action. And I think we've got a couple of interesting presentations, all revolving around food service this evening. We're going to start with an actual student presentation on sustainability in our food services program, so, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me.
And may I just pass on a comment from the administrators at University High? High praise, high praise for the way you have worked on this project, and I know you've partnered with our director here, but the University High administrators couldn't say enough about you and your professional presentation and everything that you've done here. So I just wanted to make sure the board understands the work that this young woman has done and how impressive she is. And I wanted to say that on behalf of University High.
Um, so I'm just going to go ahead and read this letter that I wrote, if you want to follow along, it's in your packet. I will also click through this presentation as I speak, and if you get bored, you can look through any of the things in your packet because there's a lot of good information in there. Dear Montegalia County Board of Education, my name is Rose, and I'm a senior at University High School. I'm writing this letter to bring attention to a matter that may not seem urgent, but is, in fact, more pressing and severe than many people realize, and that matter is this, plastic in the lunchroom. Styrofoam lunch trays and plastic silverware are single-use items. As soon as they serve their purpose, they're discarded to remain in landfills and pollute the planet for hundreds of times longer than they were ever used by a student. This is, in a word, convenient. It is also extremely detrimental to the environment, and no amount of money or time saved is worth the toll that these items take on our planet. Allow me to provide some numbers. There are about fourteen hundred students at University High, and approximately seven hundred get lunch each day. Let's conservatively say that half of them go through the chicken or sandwich line so they use the compostable trays. That puts us at three hundred and fifty students using the styrofoam trays in a day. If we add in the number of students who get breakfast every morning, about one hundred, we end up at four hundred and fifty styrofoam trays in one day, an amount that fills, according to head custodian John Hines, forty-five fifty-five gallon trash bags daily. There were one hundred and eighty days in the school year. If you multiply those numbers, that results in more than eighty thousand trays discarded across the year, and that's only at UHS. If we take into account the eleven thousand three hundred students in the county, note the fact that many of them are already using the washable or biodegradable trays provided in their schools, and let's conservatively assume that two thousand Mon County students use styrofoam trays in a day. We can estimate that the total number of students in the county produce nearly four hundred thousand styrofoam trays in a year. That's nearly thirteen tons of trays and around eight hundred thousand plastic spoons and forks. If we keep going at this rate, Mon County schools will produce four million styrofoam trays in the next ten years, the equivalent in weight of forty Asian elephants. And of course, that's not including the hundreds of thousands of trays we've already discarded in past years. So why are these numbers important? Why does plastic in the environment matter at all? According to the Society of Environmental Journalists, styrofoam takes at least five hundred years to decompose in landfills, that is, if it ends up in one. Styrofoam also happens to make up approximately ninety percent of marine debris, adding to the ten to twenty million tons of plastic that make their way into our oceans every year and frequently end up in the stomachs of fish, birds, and countless other aquatic and coastal creatures. Plastic forks, spoons, and straws are an issue as well. They not only take up to one thousand years to decompose naturally, but they also, like styrofoam trays, break down gradually over hundreds of years until they become the tiny, less than five millimeter objects known as microplastics that pollute our world in the trillions. Just like regular plastic, microplastics are extremely harmful to both marine and terrestrial life. One study conducted by Duke University found microplastics in two-thirds of a sample of marine mammals. And because we often consume the animals that are affected by them, microplastics affect humans too. The average person consumes tens of thousands of microplastics each year. If we continue at this pace with pollution and plastic, the exponential growth of the red line on this graph is what we can expect by twenty fifty. In twenty thirteen, New York City announced that they would eliminate styrofoam trays from their eighteen hundred public schools, effectively keeping eight hundred and fifty thousand trays out of landfills and oceans every day. As you can see, that amount of trays is the equivalent of almost nine times the height of the Empire State Building, and that's what New York City students were producing every day. Their decision to make the switch to compostable trays has since influenced countless schools across the United States who took action after realizing that in twenty-five years, the one city alone discarded three billion styrofoam lunch trays, trays which will still exist in the environment when our twenty times great-grandchildren walk the earth. Based on the fact that biodegradable trays have now found their way into our lunchroom, I believe that you are aware on some level of the problem with plastic in our schools. I applaud you for making the decision to switch some of the standard disposables to a more eco-friendly material and encourage you to consider switching all the lunch trays to either compostable trays or the washable plastic trays and utensils that save the planet tons, literally, of needless waste every year. What about the financial repercussions of introducing reusable trays back into our schools? The environmental impact, or rather, lack of impact, is all well and good, but aren't reusable trays far more expensive than the five or six cent styrofoam trays? It may seem so, but this isn't necessarily accurate. Mon County Director of Child Nutrition, Brian Keel, suggests that if we were to replace the styrofoam trays we currently use with reusable trays, we need maybe twenty-five hundred or three thousand of them countywide. So let's say we purchased three thousand reusable trays for the county. Perhaps these trays are Choice brand, which costs forty-five dollars a pack and contain twelve trays in each. Purchasing three thousand trays would cost eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. As of the beginning of April, we spent almost exactly that amount on the styrofoam trays in the twenty twenty-three to twenty-four school year. Purchasing three thousand reusable plastic trays, which last several years, would cost only one hundred dollars more than the single-use styrofoam we've purchased this year alone. And that's not to mention the money we'd save on the plastic silverware packs, which we've already spent nearly twenty thousand dollars on this year. I recognize that while this number is encouraging, it doesn't take into account the cost of hiring a dishwasher in each school. It also, I'm sure, seems inconvenient to have to wash so many trays each day. If that's the case, there's also the possibility of using compostable trays, bowls, and utensils. Made of plant fiber, bamboo, sugarcane, or other earth-based materials, these products break down naturally in, in the environment and are durable and lightweight. We've already found that compostable products are able to be used in our schools. We use compostable or paper boats every day in the chicken line at UHS, and there's no reason why we can't further this progress by using compostable soup bowls, cutlery, and/or lunch trays which biodegrade naturally in mere decades. In your folder, you'll find quotes from several students, teachers, and parents in the county outlining their thoughts on this issue. One student said, "I see trashcans upon trashcans of styrofoam trays, and it fills me with dread." Another wrote, "I would rather go back to reusable trays than damage the globe more than we already do." A teacher from Suncrest Elementary School rather directly stated, "We need to listen to the next generation about the world that we are leaving them. We are trying to teach our students to problem solve, and this is the kind of problem solving that our county seeks to instill in our students. Be the kind of board that practices what it preaches and listens to solutions to problems that we've created. Student leaders have valuable insights and solutions to problems that will be multiplied in their lifetime. Slight changes in the system can make a huge difference in our community and for the world and in the minds of students who are beginning to lose hope in the willingness of their role models to make effective change. In our mission statement as a county, we talk about engaging in community stewardship and practicing responsible citizenship. It's our job to lift up student leaders who attempt to do just this. If I still haven't convinced you, I won't push any farther. Instead, I'll ask a simple question, is our planet worth the price of convenience? And if you think it is, are you, your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, et cetera, ready to live with the consequences of that choice? Thank you."
Any questions, comments, board members? That's very impressive research.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time in doing so, so.
And if anyone's interested, this is the tray that I'm talking about. It's pretty nice. So, and, you know, these are compostable, and these are not the ones that we use, but we could use them, biodegradable. So there is also that.
That's what we ate on when I was a kid, where are those trays? They don't break down very, you know, they last a long time.
Thank you, Rose, for that presentation, and we will look in, look into this for you and for the, for the kids that you're speaking of. Great job, Rose.
Thank you.
All right, up next, board members, we're going to continue our food theme for the evening. We do have our We do have our Director of Food Service, Director of Child Nutrition here, Brian Keel. He also has some information for you related to our child nutrition program. Mr. Keel, good luck competing with that one. I notice you strategically put her first.
I do want to say how much I appreciated working with Rose and how thoughtful she was. Every year at this time, I get phone calls. I've been in this position for 10 years now. And get phone calls, and usually the student and sometimes teacher on the other end of the line just wants to tell me how horrible I am and how I'm killing everybody and everything. And so when Rose called me and she said she wanted to talk about the styrofoam, I just went, "Oh, no, here we go again." But she was so amazing at thoughtful, had done clearly then, provided resources that we could use, and was willing to listen to what we are already doing, though it's not where we need to be. Hopefully, we can get there soon. She was great to work with, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just did want to share with you, this has been on our minds for the last few years, especially coming out of COVID, when we used everything was styrofoam. Everything was disposable. And so we recognized that we had an issue and the cost of using those disposable styrofoam trays to clamshells. Everything during COVID was clamshells. And so we made a goal that we wanted to reduce our styrofoam footprint as fast as we can. Just a year ago, we used 397 cases... No, 12,390 cases of styrofoam trays. And this year, we're using a quarter of that, around 300 cases. We went from last year to $38,000 of styrofoam trays to currently this year, $11,000. And so is it where we need to be? Not yet. So what we did is all the elementary schools and all the middle schools that are able to are now using reusable trays, washable trays. Sorry, I need your tray there. So they're using these at all the elementaries and most of the middle schools that are able to. Four schools, Clay Patel, University High, and Morgantown High in South are using these trays whenever we have, which we would call county menu, thicker items. And so the other items, so these are current items we do use in most schools. These are for soup at most schools, not all of them. And so we need to do a better job of making sure they're using these. We use these for our Chinese Day and other things that we can put in there. And these are the things that Rose mentioned, that at the trays that we use when there's popcorn and popcorn chicken and pizza and so on. And so now I did do some research because Rose did challenge me. And so we, because I said to her, we did try a version of this tray about five years ago. And literally, as soon as you put anything on it, the moisture soaked it in and fell apart. And we have food everywhere. And so Rose said to me, "But that was five years ago."
And it was one.
And it was, well, one school experiment, yes. So I looked into these. It does cost more. These are, the styrofoam trays cost 5 cents a tray. These are 10 cents a tray. We can get, and they are in stock. I went to a food show this week in Pittsburgh and did some research, and they are in stock. So, and then we could make... These are compostable plastic ware. So within, if they are composted correctly, within seven months, they go back into dirt form. But these, one fork costs as much as a packet that we're using now. All of our plastic ware is currently wrapped because when we came out of COVID, we were concerned about... Before COVID, all of our plastic ware was just single, and they weren't wrapped. So I think it's time that we can move forward. And so what we are going to do with University High is experiment. For the month of May, try these paper tray. And then also try the compostable forks and spoons to see if we would, by getting rid of the packet that's wrapped, that's just as much as this. If we go to single use, we're not expending much more. But what we've saved over the last year in using the washable trays, we would still be cheaper if we, if these work out, use these. And so we're not moving as fast as Rose would hope us, wished us to move, but we are making progress, and it's something we are committed to doing, and we have kept our eye on the last few years. That's all I wanted to say. I wondered if you had any other questions about what we're doing. But I thought this was something that we needed to... At least you needed to hear about it, how important an issue it is. Any questions for... Yes?
So pre-COVID, did we use all washable? Because...
In the elementaries and middle.
Still elementary and middle, so the high schools had slowly gradually gotten these.
High school has a logistical issue in regards to trying to, especially University High that has 700, and Ortona, 1,000, to wash trays and get them through the line quick enough. So we actually did some research with Mr. Mahalco. If we were to save all the trays, so we can't wash them in between because they're washing their others trays so that we could, their cooking equipment, so that they can use them for the next lunch. So we looked at a room that we could stack 1,000 trays in each day. And then at the end of the day, someone could come in and wash them. And it was very impractical to do that. He was concerned about the rodents and so on, but we had looked at that. So there's a practicality, how we can get them washed fast enough and where we would put them at the two large high schools. And then there's a staffing issue. We at Clay Patel, they only have two cooks now. And so they don't have the staff to even put someone into washroom. And so we switched from, just recently, from washable trays there to styrofoam because they don't have the ability to do that.
But all the schools have the capability of wa... I mean, we have wash centers available.
Yeah, we have dishwashers at all the schools if... Yes, yeah.
But you still, obviously, you still need someone to operate it, so...
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, you'd have to have that for all the cooking utensils. But now you have the capacity to do all of those trays.
Right, yeah.
Where we are, right?
Yep, we did time... You can get eight of these trays in a dishwasher, and it takes two minutes to get them through. And it would take three hours to wash the trays at Morgantown High. So they would have to be done afterwards. And so we have looked at that, and it just didn't seem, to be honest, feasible to do.
Well, because the staff starts usually a couple hours... Most of the kitchen staff starts a couple hours before breakfast is even out. And so their day ends earlier. So if you tack three hours onto that for someone, it just doesn't...
We were proposing maybe bringing someone in half a day once they leave. That was the research we looked into. But they needed to find a place to store 1,000 trays until the students were gone. And so we had looked at that issue and didn't find it feasible. And so that's when we started changing a lot of the items to the paper at the high schools. But we haven't gone completely paper.
Where were we storing before? Because obviously, we still had the same-sized schools, right? Same-sized kitchens?
Yeah, since I've been here, I've not seen the high schools use washable trays. And I've been 10 years in this position, two years as a cook at Morgantown High, so 12 years. So I don't know. Clearly, there's a window there for them to do it, but I don't know. They're increasing in their lunch, at both schools, University High and Morgantown High. The number of lunches that we are doing are increasing each year, and so...
Well, I think probably too, the free breakfast and lunch is... More and more people might avail themselves of that, that maybe wouldn't have at one time. But, and that which just increases all of the use of all those things.
Right, yeah.
Yes, because I can remember going, cooking with a cook in the kitchen, not that I was cooking, but I remember them running all the trays through everything at that time.
Yep.
Because it's labor-intensive. It's not easy.
Right. And that's why we gave them two years to transition out of COVID for all the elementaries and middle schools because they were used to not doing any of the washing, and it saved them time. And so we gave them two years to transition back. But this year, all the elementaries and most of the middle schools. South is also one of the middle schools that's not using because we have a food court format there. And they're serving almost just as many as University High. They serve 650 lunches at South.
So they're using styrofoam there?
Only in their county line. They have five lines. So the chicken line, pizza line, the other lines, they use the paper boat. But currently, all the schools in there, which I call the county menu, they're using the styrofoam.
I mean, I know before COVID, at least at the middle school that I was at, we used the trays for a long time, and then all of a sudden, they would use it periodically, use styrofoam, and then that was just fast and easy. So it became a habit. Is there, you're saying that the middle schools and the elementary schools use the trays now?
The washable trays, yes.
How often are they just choosing to use the other ones? Or is there a rule or a limit or a limited supply?
The school you're referring to in particular, we had to encourage... And so they're supposed to be using it three or four times a week. They have less staff now than they used to. And so like on days that they have, bring their truck in, the big delivery truck, we allow them to use another thing other than the washable trays. So it's been a battle at some of the schools to encourage them because it's fiscal manual labor to do that.
And then my other question is, even if you have to still substitute something, paper or otherwise, for trays, couldn't you put, even at the high schools, real silverware in a big bowl of soapy water until somebody could wash them?
We could, but silverware is actually even more manual because you have to separate them all. And so silverware actually takes way more time than the trays. Because the trays, you can pull them out, stack them, and they're done. The metal forks, spoons have to be separated. And so for them, I would like to see them, if anything, transition to this to make their jobs easier, so... Because we are former cooks, so I'm going to defend them. They work hard.
Oh, I know.
And so...
Absolutely.
So anything I try to do to make it slightly easier when it's sensible...
Are those biodegradable green things flimsy, or are they nice and sturdy?
No, no, these are just like, I was shocked when I went to the food show.
Nothing worse than drinking off, I mean, eating off of a flimsy fork.
Yeah, it's just like a normal place.
Do they make forks? Because then...
Then we got chicken or cat's seat.
Then you could take care of soup too. I mean, I'm thinking, you know...
I did look at that. They don't in the, at the moment.
They do not make biodegradable forks?
They do make them, but my vendor doesn't bring, the distributor that won the bid doesn't have them at the moment.
Not realistic, okay.
Forks or spoons, or you're just saying the spork?
A spork is a spoony fork combo.
It's actually better than us. Okay, Brian, I guess my feedback would be, we need to really have some data. I mean, we need to know... It seems to me that saving a staff member from doing that work is going to save us money. So we would have more money to put into the more biodegradable or more, you know, eco-friendly stuff. But it's kind of hard to make that decision with... I wrote down some stuff, like a spoon went from, a fork went from 5 cents to 10 cents. So I thought, that's 5 cents per fork. How many forks are we talking? Are we talking 3,000 a day, which 3,000 times 5 cents is $150? You can't bring someone that's clean for $150, so...
Right.
You know, it's pretty much a wash to go that route.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, because it helps us with staff. It's just, we really, I mean, this is a really good presentation. Rose did an excellent job. Got my wheels spinning here. But my wheels can spin all they want, but until I have actual data in front of me, we can't make a decision or the superintendent can't make a recommendation for us to make a decision. But I think it's, I think it's critical for us to be eco-friendly, and it's critical for us to listen to this. And it's, and to empower students in the things they do, I think is a wonderful thing.
Well, she did present, at the moment, with seven weeks left of school, we have spent $18,000 on our plastic ware.
Okay.
So that gives you an idea.
So it'd be $36,000 if we doubled that.
Correct, yes.
And that's $18,000, which is cheaper than hiring someone to clean.
Definitely.
And we're talking every single school. So you're talking 26 schools, someone to clean silverware.
Once, so Rose asked for this information that you asked for, and when I was able to analyze it some more, obviously, we didn't go to the paper trays years ago because it was not practical. We were having more of a mess issue then. But I think the money that we've saved in the last year, I think it's worthwhile to try at University High in May to see if the plates are going to hold up and not create more issues. And I think they would do fine. And I think we would be cheaper than we were a year ago in what we spent in our disposables. I think it's a no-brainer to look at first, seeing if it's... The items that we have are going to work for our purposes. And if they do, I think it makes sense to make the switch when we're able to. Because it's only the four schools: South, University High, Morgantown High, and Clay Patel.
So I guess the question becomes at that point, are we, are we stuck with a vendor that's providing something that's subpar? Are we only trying one option? Are we, are we looking, I mean, I would challenge Rose to look at that.
Right.
Is there some other option out there where someone has a biodegradable option that's going to hold up? Because we don't want to wait seven weeks in this fail and not make a reaction this summer.
Sure.
Based on the fact that we have a vendor that doesn't... I mean, I don't know. I don't know if, I don't want to say our vendors...
No, they're the one that won the bid. No, they have a lot of resources, so we can check. I think the ones that we have that are available are going to work fine. That's my suspicion. And so when we test them out at the schools, I, again, I think it's a... I think it's something practical to make the switch over at those four schools next year.
And then if we...
I would challenge the vendor to give us some options too. And if, just in case, and ask the students, which one do they like better? I would, I mean, work with, I mean, you have a, you have a resource right behind you. And since she did all this work to get to this point, let's, let's...
I would also say that...
Since she got the tiger by the tail, let her have it.
A lot of people agree with me when I went around asking people what they thought of the styrofoam trays. And I was honestly kind of shocked by the visceral reactions that some students gave me. I asked, when I asked people to provide quotes and people, just from freshman to seniors and teachers as well, I kind of got the same level of reaction from everybody, which shocked me because students are usually pretty apathetic. But when I brought up the data and asked people to give me, you know, something that I could actually use, they, they delivered. And I would say that pretty much everybody would, would not mind making the switch. And, you know, if they're the kind of people that don't care about the environment, it doesn't inconvenience them anymore to throw away a biodegradable tray than a styrofoam tray. So that is my thought on that.
And you said just the four schools. You're going to test at University High and then see if it's feasible for the four bigger schools. Can we also look and see if it's feasible for all of the other schools for those days that they just have to use something and just get rid of styrofoam and all of...
Yeah, I think we've made significant progress in the last two years, and now we're at the finish line. And this is, I think, a very reasonable last step that we can take to get us to where we want to be.
Rose, you know what I enjoy the most? A lot of people come and make, you know, issues and hey, complain about the... You gave us great options and alternatives, and I commend you for that. That's fantastic. Thank you very much.
I think it's possible to find a solution.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. You certainly did your homework.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, guys.
If she has something else, she can tell.
No, no, no.
I'm just, I'm...
We're good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's missing Shrek practice, and so she's...
If anyone wants to do something this weekend, Shrek the Musical at UHS.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Superintendent, at this point, we're going to.
Transition to personnel here.
My understanding is she would like to close, so I guess she can say that when she comes in.
I'll ask that question.
Are they here?
Yeah, they're on the call.
They've been in the, yes. And then I think they've gone to sit and then they come back and look and see where we are, so. I wish we could.
Thank you.
Okay, we are here tonight for personnel hearing requested by Angela Bradford, at least this part of our meeting, because of the recommendation that she be placed on transfer at the close of the 2023-2024 school year. Do you have representation?
No.
Okay, so the employees here without representation and the administration will be represented by our in-house legal counsel, Jennifer Carver. Ms. Bradford, would you like an open or a closed hearing? Okay, thank you. I will give a little bit of time, clear the room. Is he okay?
He's back around in his keep.
Welcome back again, everyone. Coming back in a regular session, an executive session with no decisions made. Superintendent, moving on to new contracts.
We do have one this evening for the board. Superintendent recommends that the board approve a contract with Jennifer Austin for our Behavior Blueprint series.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments?
Yeah, what do we get for that?
She'll be here with us for the day. And we'll conduct several sessions. This is our training in June, which we will be sending out registration for. And again, we have four keynote individuals coming, either from locally here with WVU. She's not, but she has a very great specialization in working with children with special needs. And so we have a segment that we really want to focus on to help the teachers with that area. So she'll be here doing a keynote and a couple of sessions.
Okay. Yeah, I looked her up. She looks legit.
And she is, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the Jennifer Austin Behavior Blueprint contract as presented, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
We're down to our consent agenda. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented. The two include Items A: expenditures exceeding $3,000. Item B: the payment of accounts payable. Item C: our HPS purchasing group renewal. Item D is the University High School LSIC food waiver. Item E are the minutes of your April 9, 2024, regular board meeting. Item F: the early head start monitoring report. Item G: the early head start extension request. Item H: the early head start budget revision. Item I is our head start carryover. Item J is the Head Start Monitoring Corrective Action Plan. And finally, item K is the Head Start Monitoring Summary Report. And finally, item K is the Head Start Monitoring Summary Report.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Is this Mr. Kilt here? He'll just reiterate what's going on with the food waiver at University High School. The waiver. The waiver.
Yeah, tell us what it is, Brian.
Just talk about it again and why the LSIC wants it.
Well, last year, if you remember, we came to you asking to be the only school in the state of West Virginia to do a à la carte program at a university high. In order to get the waiver, you have to get the LSIC signature first, then the staff has to be involved on it, and then it has to be board approval. We thought it went so well this year. I could just spend literally hours talking. It exceeded my expectations on improving the health of the school. If you were to be there at the beginning of the year and walk through the cafeteria, you would just see just, it feels like hundreds of Red Bull bottles and bags of just junk, junk food. And so what we did is we provided them an option to, if they're, they still all get free meals. But in addition to their free meal, they can go to the à la carte and get healthy entrees. With the help of their student council, one of their suggestions was a Chick-fil-A sandwich. Well, I couldn't give them a Chick-fil-A sandwich, but I could give them a whole grain dill Chick-fil-Ax sandwich. And we sell it for $2 and then a pizza item for $2. And then we sell whole grain cookies and we sell fruit juices. And so it's been remarkable, if you walk through there now, you will, when I was there on Thursday, you didn't see more than four or five Red Bull bottles. So we, our sales is about $200 a day, but we priced everything that we're actually losing money on it. One of the concerns from the state is that we're going to try to pay for the new Renaissance Center by our à la carte program, you know? And so we intentionally made it so we want them to buy. We're trying to undercut the fast foods and so that they buy healthy fruit juices. And so it's been remarkable. And so coming to you now, the LSIC and the staff just resoundingly is asking to do it again. And so we have to send this waiver to the State Department. One of the things we're working on, we're hoping to do this year, is the cookies are the number one items. And so I went to the bakery, their baking class, and said, could you make the cookies? And they said, absolutely. But we're selling like 200 cookies a day. They were thinking making a couple dozen. And so they're looking at the practicality of them doing that, but then we would buy the cookies from them and that baking program would benefit from that. And so it's just, that's all I talk about is I think it's just really, when you try to do something to improve, this worked. And so hopefully, when we send the waiver back to the state, they will be accommodating and allow us to do it again.
Should we be encouraging any other schools to look at this? Or is it just not practical at the other locations?
Right now, Morgantown High, there's so many kids in their facility. We need a new kitchen first and cafeteria first that gives them the open, University High is well designed, that gives them the openness to do this. Mr. Mahawk was concerned that we're, so many kids are going to want, it's just congestion and create issues. So that's the reason why we've been waiting at Morgantown High to do that.
Putting a square peg in a round hole, and that was designed.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's only so much space, unfortunately. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, board members? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Thank you. Superintendent, we have the Renaissance Academy on for discussion and other. Do you have anything specific to that decision?
Just a couple of brief comments. Board members, Friday's panel interview, I thought was a tremendous success. Extremely positive feedback on the panel itself. You can find that, it has been recorded. It's on Tri-State Productions One, their YouTube channel. And I'll tell you, the star of the show was a young lady from Morgantown High School and M-Tech, who's in their building trades program, Summer Johnson. Self-proclaimed can work circles around all of the boys in her class. Mr. Lidle, you may want to jump on her and get her in for an interview. She has 13 interviews already planned after the job fair that was at M-Tech on Friday. Excellent young lady, and her closing remark was billeded. I will be on WAJR tomorrow to speak about the Renaissance Academy. This is a pre-recorded Ask the Educator episode, and that will be on tomorrow.
At 8:30, isn't it? Is that where that place is?
8:30, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Teresa said it's 8:30, so it's right. And then on Friday, we have our professional development day, where we'll be working with the high school teachers in another similar type of panel related to economic benefits of the Renaissance Academy, as well as instructional strategies related to the type of education needed for that facility. So that's all I have.
I was on the radio today and spoke to it a little bit. Tried to avoid it somewhat today because I've spoken about it so much recently. And Dave Wilson would not have that, so. And he did reach out and give an invitation to me and you, I guess, to Teresa, to get on in the next week or two, to get drilled by the community is what it's going to be. And there are going to be open lines to ask questions and we will, that'll give us the opportunity to actually answer the questions that are out there. And I think it's going to be a great education for the community and give them an opportunity to ask the questions and get the hard questions answered. So we've got to get our stuff together. Okay, anything else? Not hearing nothing else. Moving on to board member updates. I did not have anything because I was on the boat all week last week.
I can say with the M-Tech job fair, I didn't go this year, I went last year, but my, a lot of my team did. And they said it was awesome. The kids were very eager to talk. And while they didn't really go with the mind of recruiting real estate agents, they did come up with plumbers and electricians and resources for when these kids graduate and have their, that we use every day. So it was an awesome experience for, I think, the kids and the adults that went, for sure.
I think they had a lot more vendors this time, too. I know my husband's company is going to be interviewing a lot of students. They had that opportunity, but also came back with it was very well done.
I think they had almost 60. They had over 60, but then a couple dropped out because of the flooding on the western end. But they had over 60 vendors signed up to be there.
Okay, moving on.
Jennifer, do we have any policy?
Just an update. The comment period for the policies that are currently out will end on April 26, which is actually after our last board meeting in April. So those, we will be bringing back to you at a meeting in May for second reading and adoption.
Thank you.
I guess we'll move on to personnel.
Okay. We were on a roll there for a while, but I do have one change for personnel, the regular personnel. If you look on page two at line five, if you would delete Goss Carlos and instead add Parker Dwayne. With that one change, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, well, quick. Hearing none, all in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Thank you. Superintendent, new positions?
Okay, we do have one new position that I would request the board consider this evening. This is a new professional position. This is Early Childhood Behavior Support Specialist. It's a 200-day full-time position. Be paid out of federal dollars at .6 and out of county money at .4. And at the same time, we will be eliminating one professional position, this being a mental health specialist, also 200 days full-time, which was paid out of federal money at .6 and out of county money at .4. So I'm asking you for a wash there. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the addition and elimination of those two positions.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
So are these, will this person be in early Head Start rooms or regular pre-K rooms or out at the book guides, out at the Excel Center or?
Well, almost all of the above. This is absolutely for pre-K.
Pre-K.
We have one person employed totally by Head Start. Again, she can only serve a certain amount of students with a caseload. And the need has been so great in our pre-K classrooms. So we had looked initially at someone within the mental health area. The applicants were not what we needed. And again, it is about behavior. It is certainly mental health, but it's wrapped with behavior. And our teachers need support here. So we will have two people dedicated to that for those, for our little ones. And yes, of course, it could go on into kindergarten to some degree. But, so we will be working on all, on all areas there. There's a great need.
Was that mental health position never filled?
No, it was not filled. The individual we'd looked at declined.
All in favor of the new position as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Superintendent, personnel list addendum.
Okay, I do have one change to the addendum. If you look at page three, line 22, if you would delete number 285 and add number 378. With that change, superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Our retirements are rolling in, and I hate to see some of those names on that list because some of them are really great. We will miss some of those retirees a lot.
I noticed, I noticed looking at this, that a lot of them signed up for substitutes there. It's a good job recruiting them right back in.
Thank goodness.
Getting a chance to get some flexibility in life. All right. All in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Okay, our next board meeting is April 23, here at Regular Time. So at this point, we're adjourned. Thank you, board members.